I'm just hoping for a minute of time and break room. Tell them I really want to be up before the meeting started, but since they can't get in there, just give them a hard time.
Day or?
How many?
Okay. Right on way.
I'll bring a call our meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. It's April, our April 2nd meeting of our regular county council meeting. Tonight's a little bit different in the sense that in essence of trying to think of y'all's time, we have a very short matter to take care of in executive session. So, once again, thank you guys for being here. Our very first item is to just put us into procedural vote to enter into executive session. This will be for legal update on recreation funds and also legal briefing county policy related to FOIA and public meetings. So, I ask for a motion and a second that we enter into executive session. Motion by Councilman Thiemser. Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And motion carries. We'll enter into executive session. Should be very brief and hopefully we'll start right on time at 6:30 for our regular meeting. Thank you. Smoke 'em if you got 'em. Talk amongst yourselves. Don't get all quiet. I don't know. It's kind of like everybody's like, "Oh, hush, Tim." It's okay. It's a good thing.
Maybe how much you have to?
This is what it does if it sits there for a while.
There's a timer in there, so.
Yeah, I haven't figured that out.
Call us back into session. Again, thank to all of you guys for being patient with us as we go to hear about a couple of items and we'll tell you about that in just a second. But right now, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Chairman Chris Bowers for the invocation and pledge.
That's right. My dear Lord and gracious Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for all the many blessings you've given us here. The nature, the people, just the beauty of the area, God. But thank you for everything you've done for us. We ask that you guide us tonight and you lead us as we make the decisions affecting this county, Lord. We love you. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thanks to everyone for being here and for being patient during our short executive session. We entered into executive session for two legal updates. The first was on the recreation funds investigation. As you may have noticed at last month's committee of the whole meeting, we considered recommendations from the new recreation committee for the allocation of county funding for the coming year. And those recommendations are going to be actually voted on again tonight as a part of our new transparent process. This new process is the result of reforms put in place by this council last year as one of our very first actions. Those reforms remain necessary because the old way of allocating rec funds created the potential for abuse. One example of this was the subject of our legal briefing moments ago. Mr. Roper, if you will, please let the public know about our briefing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have learned that the State Ethics Commission has ruled that probable cause exists on a complaint filed against former council member Neil Smith. The complaint alleges that Mr. Smith directed $25,000 of taxpayer funds to BMI, a private company where Mr. Smith sits on the board of directors. The complaint also alleges that Mr. Smith attempted to send an additional $65,000 of taxpayers' dollars to BMI, but county staff refused to do so until the end of his term. We are advised that this investigation is ongoing and that further information will come from the State Ethics Commission when and if they deem it appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Roper. I'm glad to see our new process is working and hope we never return to the good old boy system of spending taxpayer money that existed for years. I look forward to voting on our committee recommendations for tonight. The second issue that we discussed was a legal briefing on the county policy related to FOIA and public meetings. And based on the advice that we received, we need to amend our organizational rules of council. So, I'd ask for a motion to pull council rules from committee to amend section 4.4E to add the following line. In the chair's discretion, individuals from county staff or council may be directed to address any questions raised from the public forum. And also, as a part of this motion, the rules will be returned to committee for further study at the appropriate time. So, I ask for a motion and a second.
Question.
Motion by Councilman Ballard. Second by Councilman Thiemser. Any discussion? All those signify by raising your hand. And that motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to, that's right, item number five, our public forum. This is your opportunity to, of course, give feedback to council and on those things that you feel are important. We, in essence of time, we try to limit it to three minutes if we can. And Madam Clerk, will you please call our first speaker?
Mr. Chairman and members of council, there are no speakers tonight.
Oh, there you go. All right. Then we will, we will move on to the item number six, approval of minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the March 5th, 2018 meeting, March 10th, 2018 workshop planning retreat, and March 13th, 2018 special meeting at Alliance Pickens, and March 13th, 2018 special call meeting at
County staff along with citizens, municipalities, and businesses teamed up last month and performed a litter blitz in Pickens County during the weekend of March 23rd. This was an effort to clean up the roadways and neighborhoods in anticipation of visitors coming into town for our sequential activities. A total of 17.31 tons of trash was picked up during the event. The event also serves as a kickoff for our Five on Friday campaign. If every citizen in Pickens County picks up five pieces of trash on Friday, it would equate to a half a million pieces of waste cleaned up each week. It was Abraham Lincoln who said, "I'd like to see a man proud of the place in which he lives. I'd like to see a man live so that his place is proud of him." Pickens County employees, municipalities, citizens, and businesses showed their hometown pride with the cleanup cleanup event, and we can certainly be proud of everyone involved.
Yeah, I just want to say that I was absolutely blown away at the response from not just the folks that work here at the county to take their time to go do this, but also, when you look at the sheriff's office and the firefighters that were out there, all 100% council, 100% the state delegation, South Carolina Department of Transportation, I mean, it just goes on and on and on. And it's interesting because I've noticed that we're now getting phone calls from other counties wanting to know, "What did y'all do? How did you do that? That seems like it's a really good idea." And that was, I'm just so excited to see so many people that were involved and a part of, and people that want to continue to do this. So, thank you for, I know it was not an easy undertaking. It wasn't just like, "Oh, we're going to go out and clean up." It was like, you know, you had to have these maps and plan out where who's going to be where, and it took a lot. So, thank you for all that you did. You guys want to mention anything on that?
I think it was a great, great, great experience. My daughter actually got fired up about it at school. They were picking up the trash around the school, and they actually had tally marks, and it was really neat. And several of the local businesses I saw posting on Facebook and social media that they were picking up. So, I think it's something to really get behind, and I want to encourage everybody, the Five on Friday thing, you know, that's what it's all about. It's the way we maintain this, so.
That campaign should kick off this week, Sharon. Ms. Johnson's going to be putting out some information on that. We hope council considers making this an annual, maybe even a biannual event as we go forward.
Cool.
Finally, tonight, I've got Ms. Denise Quatic with our emergency management department. She will come up and give you an update on our Pickens County homeless shelter activities.
Good evening, council. I have met with, twice with the Salvation Army and Tracy and Sunshine Gant, some churches and organizations regarding starting an advisory task force so that we can understand what the need is in Pickens County. We're trying to determine what type of shelter model do we need, a warming shelter or a day shelter? And right now, we're almost to the point where we need a warming shelter, so this fall we're going to start one. But the demographics of that, you can only house certain people. So, do we do single mothers with children? Do we do just men? Or do we do families? So, we're trying to determine how that looks and who do we help, you know, and how do we make it look? We have nine community partners or organizations willing to be on this advisory task force to start that process so that we can start determining how that works. I'm working with the Salvation Army. They've been doing this for 10 years in Greenville County, and it works. So, we're trying to get churches and organizations involved and how can they help us and can they open shelters? And maybe we open a shelter in Eastly that's for single mothers, and maybe we open a shelter in Liberty for men, and do we open a shelter in another community for families? So that all these churches are willing and to come together and to help with that. That's our main goal. The sustainability will be donations from community partners. I've been working with, like I said, I've been working with the Salvation Army, and we have created a timeline, or they have created a timeline. So, October 28th, we'll open a cold shelter in Eastly, develop a network of churches throughout Pickens County who wish to be identified as locations for additional cold shelters, cold weather shelters during various communities of Pickens County. And then we'll develop a poverty collaboration active network of churches. We'll call it PCAN throughout Pickens County, and they serve as a local cold weather shelter within communities that are high risk of poverty. The location serving in this model will respond to whatever the actual need is, again, family, mom and child, or just men. We have another advisory task force meeting at the end of April to determine and move forward on how we're going to bring these churches together and what churches are willing to serve as these warming shelters as the fall comes upon us. Do you have any questions?
Come on down. You got any questions?
So, you said churches would serve as the actual, how they would actually have the actual facility?
Yes. Salvation Army Jim Abbott has been working with a lot of community churches and seeing if they're willing to open their doors and start warming shelters this fall.
And the cost would be absorbed by the churches?
Yes, in community donations.
A lot of people don't realize that when you have churches housing those folks, it saves a lot of costs where otherwise you would have a separate building, and a separate building wouldn't be used all year long.
That's very true. The main goal for Salvation Army in one to two years is to have a place where they can bring in residents and help them find jobs and transportation and all of that. And that's on down the line. We want to first see how does a warming shelter, how do we work a warming shelter, and how are we going, and who's even going to come to the warming shelter and start that process first?
Are places like Home and a Heart, Dream Center, are they involved?
Yes, they are. They're on the advisory board.
Is there, I know that you said that you've got nine community partners. Are we tying this in any way into the, like, the Pickens Mental Health Clinic opportunities to?
Behavior health is on the advisory task force.
Okay. Cool.
And what about a number of actual homeless people? Has that been determined as best as possible? Not one by, you know, what Mr. Abbott talked about, the official way you got to do it, but just getting a rough hit count? Has that been before?
We haven't done that yet. I think he's still waiting for that HUD process where they went out and they spoke to them, and it's like an eight-page document that they speak to these people that are, you know, homeless, living in the woods to make them fill out, and a lot of them aren't willing to do that. And like Mr. Abbott said, the last time he was here, a lot of people choose to be in the woods. They don't want to come out of the woods. And that's what we're running into.
Right. Okay. Any other questions, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your willingness to serve as a part of that. We really, I don't know whether you're willing or not. Gerald may have told you to do it, but Mr. Wilson may have told you to do it. But thank you very much for being a part of that and for your report. We'll move on to item number eight. This is from our committee of the whole. We met at the Performing Arts Center on Monday, March 19th, 2018 at 6:00. And you've got a written report in your packet. The first item addressed was log number 93, discuss past, present, and future of Pickens County from historical perspective. And Mr. Quinn, I saw you were here today. Thank you again for coming to speak to us. No action was taken by the committee. Next item number was log number 92, the Pumpkin Town Fire Department Property Purchase. Committee recommends approving the Pumpkin Town Fire District to move forward with acquiring the acre of land near the intersection of Highway 11 and Tally Bridge Road for $20,000 to be expended from the Fire District's funds. As this comes as a recommendation from the committee, it does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And motion carries. The next item was log number 88, recreation funding recommendations. And there's a lot here. That's why, I feel like I need to read through all, I mean, I don't mind. I'll read through these just so that we're sure that we kind of see what's going on. In the Council District One, City of Clemson Parks and Recreation Department, the approved amount is to be for future projects as defined, that'll, in other words, they're holding off on that. Clemson, PTA, nothing there. Clemson University Department of Parks and Recreation Tourism, $2,000. Visit Clemson, $7,500. And the Children are Future DBA Upstate Fort, $3,000. The amount set aside for the Clemson Parks and Recreation Department for future project was $157,349. Mr. Roper, is it okay we vote on these by district? Would that be better?
Yes, it's absolutely fine.
Okay. Is there, I need a motion in a second on the first district?
Actually, those who recommend about committee.
Oh, they'll need a motion in a second. Thank you very much. Any discussion on those? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. In the second district, the Children are Future DBA Upstate Fort, nothing there. Town of Central Parks and Rec, amount approved, $15,000 on one request and $5,000 on the other request. Greater Clemson Mountain Bikers Club, $600. Town of Norris is $12,000. Town of Six Mile, $1,250. The second request, I do need to make a motion. Councilman Whitehurst called and asked that I change, the amount requested was $10,000. It would like to, they had put in there a contingency when we met. He'd like to amend that to $13,500 per his request. So, I make that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion on amending that?
Is the amount, is the additional, what'd you say, $3,500?
It's an additional $3,500 out of that.
There is $3,500 in that account?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he had the contingency board.
Perfect.
Any other discussion?
Is there reason for it? Was there?
I know that it was, they were looking at seeing what they could, how they could offset costs and make sure that they got the amount of money allocated based on what it was going to cost to do this particular project. I don't have the details of the project. I mean, I'm sure it's in here, but that was why, because they were trying to get it to come in less, and it wound up being $3,500 more. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to make that amendment, wait, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Motion is second for that amendment.
Okay, we already done that.
But.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Sorry, I'm just, I'm in a cloud. I don't know why. I do apologize. All right, on to district number three. Oh, no, no. We got to vote on all of that for district number two. All those in favor of those requests for district number two, please raise your hand. And that motion carries. On Council District Three, City of Pickens, amount approved of $49,500. Hagan Mill Historic Site and Folk Life Center, $9,000, and the county to assist with grading on that. And then YMCA of Pickens, $2,500. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'm pleased to say that as part of county, we're contributing to the Doodle Trail, and the Doodle Trail, it helps way more than just the city's residents. Anytime on a hot, warm, or a summer day, you go out there, you're going to see tags from about four or five different states. It really draws the people. And the city of Eastly, the city of Pickens did a great job. I ride the Doodle Trail a lot myself. It's one of the best bike paths in the upstate, maybe the state. Very challenging. If you hadn't got on it, the walk, run, or ride, highly encourage you to get out there and do that. It's good for your physical fitness, mentally and physically, and it's good for you, and I'm pleased that we're able to contribute to that because it helps a lot of people that live out in the country, out in the county. So, please do that.
Cool. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. On District Four, the rec board met this evening and came up and asked that we, that I make a motion to pull this for right now. They're going to meet one more time with the City of Liberty on their requested amount. It needs to be discussed, I think, at least one more time before they come back to us. There was a little misunderstanding, and they needed a little bit more information on the bids. So, I make that as a motion that we pull District Four's until our next meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Feumster, second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. On to District Five. Sorry, I laugh because I feel like I'm doing the Hunger Games. YMCA of Eastly, $2,500. City of Eastly Parks and Recreation, $65,000. And then nothing on Operation Dragonfly. Is there any other discussion on that? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. On District Four, the rec board met this evening and came up and asked that we, that I make a motion to pull this for right now. They're going to meet one more time with the City of Liberty on their requested amount. It needs to be discussed, I think, at least one more time before they come back to us. There was a little misunderstanding, and they needed a little bit more information Motion by Councilman, through second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Onto District Five. Sorry, I laugh because I feel like I'm doing the Hunger Games. YMCA of Easly, $2,500. City of Easly Parks and Recreation, $65,000. And then nothing on Operation Dragonfly. Is there any other discussion on that? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Onto District Number Six, Dacisville Recreation Association, $18,111.67. And then Dacisville Community Club, $24,000. Those were the amounts talked about. And is there any discussion on that?
The $18,111.67 is for operating costs for the Dacisville Recreation Association. The Dacisville Community Club is also finishing a pavilion. This will be the completion of that pavilion, and it's going to cost about $24,000.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And motion carries. The next item addressed was log number 91, update on Twin County partnership with the district calls rule. No action was taken by the committee. This concludes our committee of the whole report for March 19th. Now on to council correspondence. Wow, there's a lot. From the chairman, April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. It's symbolized by blue pinwheels, often seen throughout the county during the month of April. And the pinwheels of prevention represent the happiness that every child deserves as a part of our continuing sesquicentennial celebration and to bring awareness to child abuse. The county will place 150 pinwheels in front of the administration facility. Also on letter, we'll have, we'll have a budget work session next Monday evening, April 9th at 6:00. Our committee of the whole will meet April the 16th at 6:00. And based on the amount of time that we get through on that committee, the whole meeting, we'll do, we'll have a budget work session to follow that. Those meetings are, of course, held in the main conference room. We are, we've scheduled another budget work session for April 23rd if we need it. It's based on what we get through and what you guys decide and what you'd find out. But we'll see how it gets through there. Is there any other correspondence that needs to be announced? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next motion period and new business. We're now in our motion period of new business. Is there any new business that we need to add for this evening? All right, then we'll move on to item number 11. An annual update from Upstate South Carolinians Alliance. I would like to recognize Mr. John Lummis from Upstate South Carolina Alliance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. And thank you for your support of the Upstate Alliance, Charles Lippman, for over the past year, almost year. Really appreciate your support. Thank Ray Farley, who is here with us. I work very closely with Ray Farley on economic development. He's a master of that, and he's a master of projects. So I do thank you. Going to do my presentation this evening, and basically, you'll understand once I did it, it's highly valuable to support our activities. Where we see trends occurring in economic development. Economic development truly isn't the same as it was 25 years ago, when BMW announced it was coming to town. Manufacturing has changed. The world economy is changing. And as home to nearly 500 firms from 34 different countries, the upstate is part of the world economy. That means things are changing for us, too. In the past, the Upstate Alliance has come to you with reports about what's already happened. Today, we're presenting data about what we project will happen, what we expect will happen in the next 50 years. I would like to start that off with a short video about the Upstate Alliance.
Business moves here. And what it does, more jobs are created, attracting new business and building a skilled workforce that helps foster communities by investing back into them, resulting in an unsurpassed quality of life for residents of the upstate. From research to relationship building, the Upstate South Carolina Alliance collaborates closely with public and private partners across the 10 upstate counties in order to leverage opportunities for growth in key industries, including automotive, aerospace, advanced materials, and bioscience. With nearly 500 international companies operating here, these efforts to build our region to a global marketplace leader are paying off. Looking ahead, there's even more room to grow, but we can't do it without you. Let's grow together today.
We're seeing new opportunities for communities in our region to that, that we want you to know about. Because we believe your community will leave money on the table and jobs on the table if we don't respond to three major disruptive trends in economic development. The first major trend is the change in project size. Economic development success used to be tied and hinged on attracting large manufacturers. Bring in a big company, bring in lots of jobs, huge win. But fewer big opportunities will exist over the next five years. That's true here in the upstate, and that's true in every part of the U.S. Here's the data we've crunched and what it tells us. Major projects are down 50% over the last 10 years. Not just here, but nationwide. For us, projects that bring more than 50 jobs or over $1 million in investment have declined. Meanwhile, middle market firms are where we find growth. Mid-sized companies have created the most new jobs, 72% of new jobs in the U.S. And I will say that Ray Farley and his team at the Alliance have done a really good job in finding these type of middle market firms and landing them. They, they really do a good job with this. When we look back at the last 20 years, we saw something else. 86% of jobs created in South Carolina were by firms that were already here, your existing This is where we see the best opportunities, attracting more mid-sized and small firms and helping your community expand your existing companies. Imagine a small technology firm relocates to your community. They come here to support one of the big manufacturing sectors. Automotive is an obvious one. The small firm adds to your economy quickly. They don't need a big infrastructure investment. They don't require a large skilled workforce you weren't able to provide. But they do hire local support staff and for local services. They use a bank, an attorney, a local CPA. They buy or rent office space. They eat in your restaurants and shop with your local merchants. And they support local community projects. Imagine this one firm attracts other small firms that like what they see, or other companies they want to collaborate with them. Those small firms also come to your community, providing the same advantages without carrying the old economic development burdens. You start to see how this disruptive trend can become a beneficial one in many ways. Small and mid-sized firms can bring money and jobs. To take advantage of it, first, we had to recognize this opportunity. Now we have to build support, reward our economic development teams pursuing these smaller but valuable projects, and tell these economic development success stories in a way that gets people excited. The second disruptive trend we see goes hand in hand with the first one. Because trend number two is a growing demand for innovation. When economic development is tied to manufacturing, you may worry about what innovation means. Maybe you worry it's a code word for automation, which will mean reduction in hiring. But if we don't embrace innovation, if we equate innovation to fewer jobs, we're not going to attract new companies. So to respond to this second disruptive trend, our strategy at the Upstate Alliance is to be an innovation connector. Here's why innovation is critical to our plans. Our data shows that on average, it took only, it took five employees in 2015 to produce $1 million of manufactured goods. Back in 1980, the same amount of production took 25 employees. Tasks performed by robots are expected to increase from 10% to 25% in the next 10 years. With automation, external sources and services are going to be more important. Local labor costs matter less. That's a big change for us to embrace because, as you all know, labor cost has been a wave we've sold companies on coming here in the past. Now manufacturers want to go where service firms and talent are available. Remember that word, talent, because I'm going to talk a little bit about that more in a minute. We can take what we've learned from automotive and build on it. We're in a great position to become innovation specialists in aerospace and advanced materials, too. Advanced materials is a broad category and can include anything from nanotechnology to new fabrics and fibers. An advanced materials focus helps our region take advantage of the work being done by companies like Milliken and companies in man, automotive and aerospace. For all of us, the key to making the most of this trend is to embrace it. Not view it as the end of manufacturing jobs, but as the key to building a strong regional The third major trend that's changing the upstate is our expanding and changing role in our region, excuse me, is in our, is expanding and changing our role in the world market. As you know, we first attracted foreign companies to our region for the low cost of doing business here. Then we built infrastructure. We learned how to work in a global market. We perfected our exporting processes. Now, 25 years later, we are a great base for exporting. There are new ways for us to take better advantage of that and strong reasons to build our participation in the world marketplace. The numbers look good. Our region's economic development success has made us unique in the United States. Our share of jobs from foreign companies is twice the national average. We have a great platform for attracting even more foreign companies to the upstate and a distinct advantage because of our established success. Bringing more foreign direct investment, or FDI, to our region will still be a top priority. But data shows us another way to take advantage of our connections to the global marketplace. Wealth around the world is growing. From 2015 to 2020, more than 80% of global economic growth is projected to occur outside of the United States. This new and growing middle class will have spending power it's never had before. Everything we've done to bring foreign companies to the upstate puts us in a great position to help companies here sell to the global markets. At the Upstate Alliance, we can help homegrown companies find new customers by connecting them with Export 101 training, international commerce trips, and more. One example of how exporting can drive economic development is the privately-held, family-owned company headquartered in Liberty. Cornell Dubilier produces capacitors used in industrial, medical, military, and aerospace applications, and is the largest power capacitor company in North America. Locally, the company employs 205 people, including 12 engineers. Cornell Dubilier, Pickens County industry, is part of a global supply chain with major OEM partners such as Northrop Grumman, Siemens, and Hubbell. Its products are tied, are used throughout the world, driving growth here at home. Our other opportunity, attracting even more foreign direct investment, is tied to this important concept. Marketing ourselves as a region, that's what we do at the Upstate South Carolina Alliance. We need to remember how the world understands us. Even in the United States, people still call us the Carolinas because they're not sure what's north and what's south. Now place yourself in the shoes of executives halfway around the world. They don't know Greenville from Greer, Spartanburg from Seneca, Pickens from Powdersville. They see us as a region on the map. For economic development, we're stronger when we work together as a region to market ourselves to them. Being even better at telling our regional story is one way we'll take advantage of this opportunity to bring even more foreign direct investment to the upstate. You may have seen this slide before. How each community within the upstate prepares and markets its area for economic development is a great driver in our collective success. We've talked about challenges that all communities face. Here in Pickens County, the Alliance Pickens team has done a great job with its focus on addressing an increasingly significant challenge, workforce development. The Recognized Pickens County Scholar-Techician Program is a model for other communities throughout the country. It bridges the gap between education and industry. It calls upon the partnership with Tri-County Technical College, the K-12 Education Community, and stakeholders like you to ensure that today's students are prepared for tomorrow's jobs. Again, Pickens County is putting itself at the forefront of what's going on in workforce development to make sure that there's continued success. So what I'm talking about here is marketing ourselves as a region. When you look for what value can Pickens County get out of the Upstate SC Alliance, I think number one, how you're getting a value out of the fact that we're marketing ourselves as a region like what I've been talking about. We also help the local developers in many ways. The local developers like Ray Farley are our number one constituency at the Upstate SC Alliance. And we are always available to help in any way we can with the local economic development offices. We help with research when we're asked to do so. Of course, we're trying to send leads and projects through RFI's to the county. We try to bring groups to the upstate like foreign delegations, South Carolina Department of Commerce, international offices. Many opportunities to the region that the counties themselves wouldn't be able to do There's also a lot of opportunities to network with local economic developers, the South Carolina Department of Commerce and businesses from throughout the region that can help Pickens County move forward. So what we're trying to do is market ourselves as a region and have Pickens County as part of that. Another thing I want to talk a little bit about in order for Pickens County to continue to be competitive is product. Y'all know this, and I know that it's been a discussion we've had before. Having sites and buildings, industrial parks continues to be key in these projects that we're talking about coming to the region. And I think Ray has done a really good job with some planning in that regard, and I think that's going to be key moving forward, that you have a spec building, that you have an industrial park, that you have a place for these companies to go when they're looking. Because if you don't, they're going to look elsewhere. I'll wrap up with, with a couple of other comments. 25 years ago, getting one German manufacturer here was huge. Now we're at nearly 500, and that was BMW. Now we're at nearly 500 firms from 34 different countries and counting. Our connection to the world is more important now than ever before. Our ability to tap into new markets through exporting is a big opportunity, and our proven ability to work together as a region is one of our strengths. Three major trends and so much information. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council or anyone else may have at this time.
Have you recently, have you worked on any projects with Ray Farley?
We're, we're in, when you say working on projects, I mean, we're constantly marketing and, uh, marketing the upstate. There have not been specific projects in the seven or eight months that y'all have been that have landed here that were leads that we had. Now, we have a number of leads out there that have been provided to the county in our other nine counties that we are working on. And we're constantly working with all 10 of our counties on that. Again, we're a marketing agency. We're out there trying to find leads and prospects. We're out there searching the world for companies that will come potentially to the upstate, and we're trying to connect to those industry sectors that will do that. Economic development is a long-term process. It takes, many projects take one, two, five. Toray took six years to locate in the upstate of South Carolina. So it's a long-term process. So what we're trying to do is work with Pickens County to market what you have to bring opportunities here.
Do you, I, I know that with the, the businesses that are, that we've been working with over the past year or so, by being a member of Upstate Alliance, does it offer opportunities for those existing companies that are expanding? Or does it offer, as we continue to, I'm trying to think, are there, I don't know how to word this question, are there other opportunities for, for businesses that we're able to take advantage of because we're a member that we wouldn't normally be able to do?
Well, I mean, we're an investor organization, and there are investors throughout Pickens County that invest in our organization. And I think that they're able to take advantage of that. Clemson University is one of our board members. The city of Easly has been involved in what we do. Baptist Easly Hospital has been a member in the past. So there, there are lots of groups that do take advantage of what we do. Now, regarding to existing industry, the counties really work on that. We do not get involved in existing industry and trying to do expansions. But I, I think one of the biggest things that businesses from here and the government and economic development can do is just the ability to network with others throughout the upstate as we grow together as a region.
Has, has our rejoining strengthened the ability of Upstate Alliance to go after bigger or more expanded opportunities with those, with the trends are growing?
It certainly has because, I mean, we're a stronger region with everyone in it. When we market, basically, in economic development, journals and, and when you look at, when people study economic development, they show that regions that are all together, contiguous with populations of 1 million or more are very successful in recruiting as a region because their workforce, their transportation issues that come together with a regional focus. So I would definitely say that everyone in the region together is important, particularly Pickens County is very important to us. Clemson University is within Pickens County, our research university that we work with so much and sell as a big part. That, that's in this county, which is a major thing. There are also a number of high-tech manufacturing companies that we want to be able to use in our marketing to, to get other companies to come here. So we need Pickens County as part of the Alliance to be able to market regionally.
As, as with any marketing, you're always looking for the ROI, return on investment. And what I've come to realize, actually, at our special call meeting where we had the last announcement with United Tool and Mold, former Councilman Ponder had said to me, you know, I don't think folks realize that it's a, it's a long process to get a return on investment. On average, what would you say is the length of time, and this, this may be more of a question for Mr. Farley, but from the time that you guys begin to, you get your RFI's, you get that first conversation going, how long does it take, on average, to, to secure that partnership or to bring that business or manufacturer into your area?
It really varies. I mean, really, the speed- I mean, really, the speed has increased over time, because companies, when they make the decision, they want to be able to go in somewhere. Sometimes a company you'll meet with, and six or eight months later, they're in a facility, particularly a smaller one could do that. For larger ones, you're talking at least a year, 18 months, two-year period or even longer. It's about building relationships. Economic development is all about building relationships. You have to work with that company and get them to trust the area and the people they're working with, so it can be a long-term process. So it really varies, but it's about building that relationship.
I will say this, I agree with you on that, to your testament, to Mr. Farley's testament, and we've been so blessed to be able to be a part of making announcements over the past, the course of the past year, and every single one of those people say they're coming here because it feels like family, and that is because that man back there and you guys sit there and develop those relationships so that you do feel like family. What other questions you have?
Mr. Farley's doing such a great job. I'm afraid our industrial park is going to be full in a couple of years. What size should our second industrial park be typically?
As big as you can make it. Huge. No, I don't know what y'all have looked at doing, but giving yourself a park that you can use for another five to 10 years at least, if not longer, I mean, talking in the range of, you know, up to 500 acres. You have to have infrastructure in there, and it's great to have a spec building that can go in, something that will draw companies in is very important.
Any other questions from you guys? We can't really take questions from the audience, but thank you. We'll, if you'll write it down, and we'll get, we'll get it answered for you. Anything else from y'all? All right, thank you very much for-
Thanks for the opportunity. Again, thanks for y'all's support. We'll continue working every day to try to bring business to Pickens County, and we appreciate y'all being part of the Upstate Alliance and part of the region, so thank you. And thanks again to Ray for his partnership.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 12. Consideration to approve the proposed tax increment financing. What are you doing? Consideration to approve the proposed tax increment financing projects as presented by the city of Easely. As a reminder, the council amended the IGA with the city of Easely to require prior written approval on any TIF projects. So you guys have got the projects that they have listed. I ask for a motion in a second on the projects as presented before we enter into discussion. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowers. Second by Councilman Theemster. Discussion on this.
My only question I have is, I know that when we looked at redoing the TIF, we set out guidelines, and I understand that's what this is about, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Everything fits within the guidelines we discussed originally, and that's just, I don't have that document in front of me, I just want to make sure legally we're all within line.
Yes, sir. What this is, Mr. Councilman, we agreed to $76,000, extend the TIF for a period of 10 years. $76,000 per year, anything collected above 76 comes back to the county. This is just a list of projects that they will be spending our portion of the funds on over the next 10 years.
Well, I don't mind listing them, the renovation of Old Market Square, Farmers Market, Downtown Refresh, West End Hall renovations, Downtown Railroad safety improvements, and the parking lot in Main Street and North A Street.
This represents about $1.5 million worth of projects. They'll only collect roughly $760,000 from the county over the 10-year period.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
The remainder will come from the school district portion and the city portion of the TIF funds.
Seeing other discussion, there's been a motion in a second, and raise your hand if you approve. Motion carries. Onto item number 13. Consideration to approve the bid for the new hangar development at the Pickens County Airport. This bid evaluation includes a request for additional funding in the amount of $71,270. The recommendation from staff is that this be expended from fund balance, as this is revenue-generating income. So I ask for a motion in a second to approve the bid as presented. Motion by Councilman Theemster.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify raising your hand. Motion carries. Item number 14. Consideration of resolution honoring Cole Murphy of Liberty High School for winning the 2018 state championship in wrestling. Unfortunately, Cole Murphy and his family could not attend tonight, so I'd like to make a motion to postpone consideration of this resolution to a future meeting when the Murphy family can attend.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowers. All those in favor signify raising your hand. Motion carries. Item number 15. Consideration of resolution number 2018-05, designating April 2018 as a Fair Housing Awareness Month in Pickens County. And this resolution is to comply with the South Carolina Fair Housing Law and will allow the county to apply for future community development block grants that are handled through ACOG. So I ask for a motion in a second to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Hendricks. Second by Councilman Theemster. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Item number 16. Consideration of proclamation number 2018-06, declaring the week of April 8th through 14th to be National Telecommunicators Week in Pickens County. And this is a proclamation, it's in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism, you know, keep our county safe. So I ask for a motion and a second to approve this proclamation.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowers. Second by Councilman Hudson. All those in favor signify by raising your hands. And motion carries. At this time, I'd like to ask Tasha Todd, Pickens County 911 Coordinator, to share why 2018 is a special year for 911.
Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, thank you so much for the opportunity to brag on 911 tonight, and most importantly, 911 here in Pickens County. As previously stated, it is very special to us this year and 911 community. This February marked the 50th anniversary of the first 911 call ever placed. In 1967, it was recommended by the government that a single number be established nationwide for reporting emergency situations. Before 1967, if a caller needed help, they would need to know the direct number for a police department or the fire department. With the encouragement of multiple government agencies and AT&amp;T, the 911 number was established. The digits 911 were chosen in 1968 as the nation's emergency number, because they were easy to remember, they were easy to dial on a rotary phone, and it was not already in use for an area code, office code, or service code. The nation's first 911 call was made, not from New York City, Los Angeles, or Philadelphia, it was made from Haleyville, Alabama, on February 16, 1968. The town still celebrates 911 every June with an annual festival. 911 is getting older, but we're getting much, much better. From the rotary phone to wireless phones to cellphones, and not too far in the future, 911 calls being placed and submitted for pacemakers or other medical devices to let us know someone's in trouble, and a lot of times even before they know themselves. So what seemed as impossible now seems probable. I've been in 911 for 22 years, 10 of them have been spent here in Pickens County. My office and staff have the privilege of serving Clemson University, Easely Police Department, and Pickens County Sheriff's Office. We make sure they stay running, but they do the hard work. While most of public safety is divided into single disciplines and jurisdictions, those of us in 911 have the unique opportunity to be multidisciplined and serve with every aspect of our public safety family. It's not a job for everyone, it's a difficult job, but a very rewarding job. A 911 telecommunicator, over the lifetime of their career, can hear someone take their very first breath and hear someone breathe their very last. Everyone that sits behind a headset is the first first responder. Before a wheel can roll on a patrol car, a fire truck, or an ambulance, someone has to answer that call. Thank you for taking the time and honoring these men and women that are often the unsung heroes of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for you to come forward, Antwana Wright and Larry Waters and Lisa Castle. If you guys will come right here, Councilman, if you guys will join me up front, I just, I've got something prepared, and I'd like to read. This proclamation that we just passed recognizes the safety of our officers, firefighters, and paramedics, is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information that you were just talking about, obtained from citizens who telephone Pickens County 911 Communications. Public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing their information, and ensuring their safety. And the public safety telecommunicators of Pickens County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. So this proclamation that we just passed, we'd just like to thank all of you for what you do, and to recognize all the men and women that serve the county as public safety telecommunicators. We're honored that Tasha Todd, Pickens County E-911 Coordinator, Antwana Wright of Clemson University PD, Larry Waters of Easely PD, and Lisa Castle of Pickens County Sheriff's Office are all here representing all the telecommunicators that could not attend tonight. We want to thank you for all you do to keep our county safe.
Thank you. 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 Some of those folks used to tell me what to do all the time.
They probably still tell you what to do all the time. That's exciting. We really do appreciate you guys being here. That's the absolutely extraordinary fun part of being able to serve in this job, to honor folks like you who take service to a whole different level, and thank you for what you do. Onto item number 17. This is first reading entitled only of an ordinance to amend section 36-176 of the Pickens County Code of Ordinances so as to further define the allowable time limit for special tax assessments and for rehabilitated historic properties and matters related thereto. This is the first reading to amend ordinance 467 to change the allowable time limit from 20 years or, to up to 20 years to comply with state law. So this is as a result of what we've done, I guess, working on in the past, and we wanted to make that change going forward. So I ask for a motion in a second to constitute this first reading. Motion by Councilman Bowers.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to point out some things. Our last meeting, we voted 5-1 to approve, saying that the Easely cotton mill was a historic portion qualified for this particular situation. I want to review some history on that and just let people know that what we did was what a previous council did. In August of 2012, August 20th, this thing was referred to committee, entitled on it, passed unanimously, and on that, some people that were here then, the council members, council, these are the last names only, Willis Smith, Ponder, Martin, Whitehurst, and White, they all voting unanimously to pass it then. August 28th of 2012, passed unanimously. September 2012, first reading back to committee, passed unanimously. March 18th, 2013, recommend the second reading, passed unanimously. April 1st, 2013, second reading of ordinance, passed unanimously. On June 10th, public hearing, no comments. Later, it passed unanimously, third reading passed unanimously. And then in 2015, that was the ordinance, okay? That's the people that approved that ordinance that we used or the last month voted on. So it's not something we created or just threw out of a hat. It's something that was passed in 20, processed from August of 2012 until June of 2013, and every one of those times, it passed unanimously by those council members. All right, 2015, go to that point, okay? And the application, which is the only difference between the application in 2015, the one we voted on the other day, there's two differences. The name on the application and the dollar value in the amount to be invested, all right? The different, the investors were different, and the dollar value was different. It was 12 million then, 24 million now, all right? That's the difference. It passed unanimously, 6-0, all right, then, 6-0. And in 2015, it passed 6-0 on that. So it's not like that we were doing something that hadn't been done before. The previous council and those members that I've read their names out, they all supported unanimously. Now, I say all this as part of the history to lead up to what you're saying, and limiting the time. The county did not, we don't give tax breaks, that's something the state does. We don't do that on that. We just said, hey, it's historical. And one thing, mentioning that, what you read is possibly moving it down to something about maybe what is in line with the state is, if I'm not mistaken, eight years. But we can't do it with this particular thing, we've already voted on it, and that's the rules they had to play by, so that's the rules we went by, but for future instances, I ask you guys to think about maybe marking it down to what is parallel or in line with the state along the lines of eight years. But I wanted to go over the history of that and let you guys know, the previous council and those members that I mentioned, they voted unanimously to support what we voted on the other day. So it's not anything new out of ordinary, I just want to refresh it and let you guys know that we're following along with what that was.
Yeah, just to echo what Councilman Hendricks is saying, I think that one of the biggest things we heard after the last meeting was the 20-year mark bothered a lot of people. And I'm not saying it didn't bother me, but that's what the ordinance was in place that we were going off of, and you can't open an ordinance in the middle of looking at an application because you don't like it or don't know the history on it or whatever. And I think that's exactly what we're doing here now, is going back and adding two words, in theory, if that's all we do, is adding up to 20 years. Because currently, the ordinance states 20 years, and I heard a lot of feedback about the 20-year was way too long for a tax break of that kind, and while I don't disagree, it's what the county's ordinance states, and that was not up for discussion at the last meeting. What was up for discussion at the last meeting was the mill project. And so I think us digging into this and making it more in line should make it better for everyone. So thank you for what you say, thank you for the history there, and thank you guys for being willing to discuss this.
And there's two more things I want to point out. In my opinion, when you start looking at the name on the application, you won't be borderline discriminating. We're not going to take part of that. You know, they did what they had to do, they filled out the application. Also, I talked to somebody in the lower part of the state that deals in real estate like this, and the return investment that this company's going to get considering they invest in 24 million, it's going to take them a while to recoup that money. So they're going to be here for a while if they don't sell. They will be here a while. And the tax money coming in off of what they invest in, it's going to be a heck of a lot more than what that place is earning right now, the taxes will get off of, it's going to be more after they do an investment versus what it's earning right now when it's rotten, sitting there rotting. So we're going to benefit from it.
I'd have heard somewhere that that mill is in pretty bad shape. This project's been put off because apparently the funding went away for this project a few years ago. And a mill is in a shape, if somebody doesn't do something with it in the near future, they may not be able to renovate it, and because it's deteriorating every year. So the alternative is, we do nothing, we're going to have a parking lot there, and it's not going to be any good to anybody, because it's in a blighted area. This project coming in could revitalize that whole area.
Well, but all we did was say that we're, they meet the requirements to begin the process. They still have to go through all the other hoops and bells and whistles and all that, whatever they have to do in order to qualify to do the project. I mean, I'm right in that assumption? So, but what we're doing tonight is what, what, uh, Councilman Hendricks was saying, we, um, are beginning the conversation of adding those two words, um, and it takes three readings to do that. But where we have the, at least the ability to say, you know what, we don't want to do 20 years for this, we want to do eight or be close to what the state's doing. So, um, I think this is, uh, recognizing maybe a, uh, not a problem, but, uh, they didn't, didn't really have the vision on the, when they wrote the ordinance the first time, this is a way for us to fix that.
One of the things I've noticed, uh, in other parts of the state, in order to correct problems with old plants, they, uh, call them brownfield projects. And the federal government spends a lot of money to clean up those things. And, and this, they, well, it won't be called a brownfield project, it'll be something invested there instead of us taxpayers having to pay for a clean, major cleanup.
Any other discussion? And there's been a motion in a second. All those in favor of the first reading entitled only of ordinance to amend section 36-176, please raise your hand. And that motion carries. Um, on to item number, uh, 18. First reading of ordinance number 552 to provide for the levy of taxes in Pickens County for ordinary county purposes for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, and direct expenditure thereof. A copy of the proposed budget has been provided at your desk. Just as a reminder, we're going to have at least two work sessions in April to discuss this, uh, budget. And, uh, this is, this is where it starts. So we, we begin the, the task of reading a lot and diving into it. I ask for a motion in a second to constitute this first reading of ordinance number 552.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Hudson.
Second.
By Councilman Feimster. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hands. And motion carries. Item number, uh, 19. First reading of ordinance number 553 to provide for the adoption of a budget amendment containing estimates of revenue and expenditure changes for Pickens County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018. This is first reading entitled only of the amendment to the fiscal year of 2017, 2018 budget. And the purpose of this amendment is to adjust that budget, uh, from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018 for revenues and expenditures for un, that were unanticipated at the time of the adoption of the current budget. So I ask for a motion in a second to constitute this reading, first reading of the ordinance number 553.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Feimster.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hendricks. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Um, item number 20. Second reading of, of ordinance 554 authorizing the conveyance of cer, certain real property in Central Pickens County, South Carolina, known as the senior center building to the Town of Central and other matters related thereto. Um, I ask for a motion in a second to constitute the second reading of ordinance number 554.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Hudson. Second by Councilman Feimster. Any discussion?
Uh, go ahead. Well, um, I know this is, um, Councilman Tri, uh, Whitehurst was in favor of this and, uh, and I thought it was a, a good project. And, uh, you know, so, uh, I think it's going to be overall beneficial, very beneficial.
I, I just wanted to ask, I know that there was a grant that they were trying to obtain and that was the reason for them coming and asking for this property and they needed to own it in order to apply for the grant, but I knew that, that grant was, uh, rapidly approaching. Where, where do they stand on that?
Yes, sir. Councilman, they have actually made the application for the grant, uh, pending. The grant will not be awarded until the council does approve the transfer of property to Town of Central. Uh, the building will be used for Meals on Wheels and the Town of Central Recreation Department.
And I believe they said that if this, I believe our agreement was if this is not used for this purpose, it comes back to Pickens County.
That is correct. It will revert back to Pickens County if the use changes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hands. Motion carries. Item number 21. Consent agenda. Um, I have on our consent agenda implementation for new federal guidelines for purchasing relative to grants to the committee of the whole and a request to accept roads in the minimum maintenance system to the committee of the whole. I ask for a motion in a second that we approve the consent agenda, agenda items as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowers.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Item number 22. Now we enter into the, the longer executive session, but, uh, this is based on, uh, we're going to go talk about contractual issues with the art grant on 12 Mile Project, um, economic development for Project Sequoia and Project Golden, uh, and then boards and commissions and vacancies for ATAX, ACOG, Assessment and Appeals, Beautification, Cultural Commission, Economic Development Alliance, Emergency Services Advisory Board, five district boards for Essential, Crosswell, Dacresville, Easely, Liberty, Pickens, Pumpkin Town, Rocky Bottom, Shady Grove, Six Mile, Pickens County Greaves Committee, Pickens, O'Conne, Anderson, Mental Health, Planning Commission, Public Service Commission, Tourism Boards, Zoning and Appeals, Hagan Mill, Performing Arts Center, and Pickens County Museum Nonprofit Corporation Boards. So I ask for a motion in a second that we enter into executive session for the reasons listed. Motion by Councilman Feimster.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hendricks. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries and we will enter into executive session after a short five-minute break. Thank you. (pause) I need this and I need this. I need this. And I need this. 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 I need this.[1794.13]